All right, I call the City Council Meeting Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022 to order. So at this time, we'll have a moment of silence for whatever you're thinking about. Thank you. Alderman Jobchin, if you'd be kind enough to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Mr. Crupp, Deputy City Clerk, please call the roll.
Dunn, Kelly, McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So good evening, everyone, again, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with all your fellow Davenporters. We're happy you're participating in your city government, and as such, your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. Especially for the folks in here, reminder, if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or just turn it off simply. That doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council on any specific item or for the public at the end, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. Please address us as one body and not as any individual. We'd love to know your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. We'll be respectful of you, please be respectful of us. Thank you very much. City Administrator, Ms. Spiegel, anything for us tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. So we have seven public hearings this evening, five under Community Development and two under Finance. So the first five will be done by Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing for case REZ 22-06, being the request of AHE Codings LLC to rezone 516 West 35th Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to I1 Light Industrial District. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number two is on the proposed conveyance of vacated public right-of-way lying between Christie Street and Bell Avenue. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number three is on the proposed conveyance of vacated public right-of-way being the easterly 20 feet of Waltz Edition, lying south of Glassbell Street and east of South Rolfe Street. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number four is on the amending the North Urban Renewal Plan to include the Fair Oaks Foods Project. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed, and our final public hearing in Community Development is on considering approval of an economic development agreement with Fair Oaks Foods. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing has been closed, and that concludes all five public hearings in Community Development. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area with public hearings is Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing on granting a 10-foot wide easement, 10-foot wide access and utility easement to Scott County from the Scott Emergency Communications Center north to the Emergency Management Storage Building in the southeast corner of Parcel P 1214-071. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then we'll close the public hearing. And the second public hearing is, I open the public hearing for the purpose of amending the North Urban Renewal Plan to include the internal TIF. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the second public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that wraps up our public hearings, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. Next area is Petition and Communications. I just have one, just want to say thanks to everybody that helped out with the Halloween Parade. Over 50 entries, some different businesses, nonprofits, youth groups, families, and some city folks. 11 blocks of parade route, 173 volunteer hours from respective partner organizations, a whole lot of staff and city folks, thanks, Davenport Police, Scott County Sheriff, Davenport Public Works, Development, Neighborhood Services, Sign Shop, et cetera. Thanks to Mike and Bob Peppers for their hospitality, especially dealing with me. Parade coordinators Tiffany Thorndike, Ally McWilliams, Samantha Torres, Hannah Whitehurst, Alderman Rick Dunn, Tim Dunn, Kylie McWilliams, Bob Walters, and Jordan Driscoll, and then Parade Volunteers, Davenport Noon Optimists, 180 St. Ambrose Women's Lacrosse, 25 volunteers from that group, North High School Athletics, 16, Alderman Jobchin and his son Luke, and resident Latonya Landfair. A lot of people helping, that's a sign of, you know, people, you know, again, care about the city and care what we do. So we do a lot of activities, a lot of different people volunteer for a lot of different things and can't do everything, but just wanted to take a moment and recognize the people from Sunday. So thank you. Anyone else? Roger that. Okay, we'll move to our four areas of discussion. There are Community Development, Public Safety, Public Works, and Finance. The first area is Community Development. Again, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 22-05, being the request of E&amp;A Enterprises LLC on behalf of Circle K Properties LLC to rezone approximately 51 acres of land bound by Forest Grove Drive, Interstate 80, the city limit, and Utica Ridge Road from SAG Agricultural District to R2 Single Family Residential District and RMF Multi-Family Residential District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Alderman Jobchin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. I don't necessarily oppose this, and obviously, I think it should stay on consent for next week. But with another rezoning coming before us on veterans, you know, I just think as a council, we got to start having some forethought into some of our other areas of town, you know, the Locust Corridor, Kimberly out west. You know, the Sixth Ward has been the boom town of the city of Davenport, you know, along Elmore, Utica Ridge, et cetera. And I just hate seeing all this consolidation. We've got other areas of town that we got to kind of work to keep thriving, and that's just some thoughts on that. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to item number two. Item number two is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 22-06, being the request of AHE Codings LLC to rezone 516 West 35th Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to I1 Light Industrial District. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council have any comments? I do have the, I do have one comment. Let me pull it up. In your green sheet, you'll see that one of the conditions that P&amp;Z put on this is that no adult use, adult use shall be prohibited on this site if it's rezoned. And also, the petitioner had signaled that they would be agreeable to extending that to retail alcohol sales as well. And so I would like to formalize that and make a motion that retail alcohol sales be prohibited on that if the zoning goes through.
Second.
Voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that has been put into there, and we'll reflect it next week. Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to item number three, which is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of vacated public right-of-way lying between Christie Street and Bell Avenue. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of vacated public right-of-way being the easterly 20-foot feet of Waltz Edition, lying south of Glassbell Street and east of South Rolfe Street. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. And before I read the next two, I think we'll bring up Mr. Berger from Community Development and just give a brief update on the economic development agreement that's being brought before us with Fair Oaks.
Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. So really, the next two items relate to this. The first one is amendment of the North Area Plan. And so, under state code, you have to amend the plan to add a TIF project in. And then, once that, if that were to be approved, then the resolution approving the actual economic development agreement with Fair Oaks is the second item. And that, as you probably read through it, mirrors our standard package, which is a 60% TIF. You actually did see something sort of similar to this before, where we pledged as a condition of state funding back in June. And so this is just certifying that, since it's a longer process and there wasn't time to get through it when they were looking at acquiring land. So, yeah, I'd be glad to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. So item number five is a resolution amending the North Urban Renewal Plan to include the Fair Oaks Foods Project. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from council? That item will move on. And item number six is a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Fair Oaks Foods. Anyone from the public here to comment? Anyone from the council? Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just make a quick, small statement. I was fortunate enough to be able to go to the groundbreaking ceremony that we had out there for Fair Oaks Food, and I'd just like to say, great family, you know, very thankful that they chose Davenport. There's going to be over 200-plus good-paying jobs. So, like I said, this is just another great example of, you know, quality businesses coming into Davenport, creating, you know, good-paying jobs, and I just look forward to working with them in the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. And I want to say, minority-owned business coming to Davenport, that's a great thing also. Thank you very much.
All right. And I would just like to continue to support this. Obviously, this has been, Fair Oaks was another great success of the GDRC, the Chamber of Commerce, the city of Davenport, and the state of Iowa. So just being a welcoming community that has a good standard incentive package that comparable projects out there have received the same package and continuing to grow. And then the one thing I would say to our city council is we've seen an incredible amount of growth in Eastern Iowa Industrial Center over the last five years. Brought thousands and thousands of jobs, hundreds of millions of dollars in assessed value, millions of dollars in annual tax revenue. But we need to start looking at the next place for that growth to occur within the city of Davenport, and it's something that we can't, we can't put off any longer. We really need to address that as a city council in the coming years if we want to continue to see our tax base grow and our market to thrive, so. And then I would ask Alderwoman Lee, when you set the agenda, to please keep that one on discussion. Thank you. All right, seeing no one else, item number seven is a resolution approving case F22-12, being the request of CF Cayman DVN LLC for a final plat of Scrabble Edition, a one-lot subdivision on 158.12 acres located west of Division Street and north of Interstate 80. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Alderwoman Lee, will you please set our agenda?
Yes, and just for clarity, you want five and six or just six?
Just six.
Okay. I move that items one, two, three, four, five, and seven be placed on consent and six be placed on discussion.
All right, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that concludes Community Development. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area is Public Safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman discuss. Alderwoman, Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the Public Safety Agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by amending Schedule 1, no routes thereto by adding various streets in the Westport Edition subdivision. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, second consideration ordinance amending Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by amending Schedule 7, no parking thereto by adding Dennison Avenue along both sides from Bridge Avenue east to the dead end. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three is a motion approving noise variance requests for outdoor events on the listed dates and times. I'll read both of these before asking for comment. First, Davenport Parks and Recreation Holiday Lights, Vegivary Learning Center, 1800 West 12th Street, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. every evening, Sunday, November 26, 2022 through Sunday, January 8, 2023, outdoor music over 50 dB. And next is Freight House Farmers Market, Kris, Kendall Market, Freight House 421, West River Drive, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday, December 2, 2022, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, December 3, 2022, and 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Sunday, December 4, 2022, outdoor music band over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item, on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, those will move on. And then we have item number four, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. Under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. R, Palmer College of Chiropractic, 1003 North Brady Street, temporary license December 8 through 12, license type, beer, wine. Next, The Christmas Cottage, 902 West Kimberly Road, temporary license November 10 through 23, license type, Class B native wine. And then, Division Mart, 3721 North Division Street, new license slash owners, license type, Class E liquor. And then we have those items under Section B, the annual license renewals, which are listed for your review, and we'll not read those. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, then I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that all items be placed on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes Public Safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Section 13.16.060 entitled Local Limits for Specific Pollutants of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 15.44 entitled Flood Damage Prevention of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by amending various subsections thereto. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the River Heritage Park Phase III project by Bill Bruce Builders Incorporated of Eldridge, Iowa in the amount of $853,924.57. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item?
Sorry.
Alderwoman Lee?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to request the plans and specs for this one from staff, and I'd like to ask that this be kept on discussion.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting work completed under the Ripley Street, 51st Street to 53rd Street reconstruction project by Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $388,633.90. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution accepting work completed under the CDBG Alley Program, 1310 Kirkwood Boulevard to 1810 Esplanade Avenue Reconstruction Project by Emery Construction Group of Moline, Illinois in the amount of $250,433.86. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution accepting work completed under the FY 2023 Brick Street Patching Program by Kelly Construction of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $159,602.8. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution accepting work completed under the FY 2023 DOT Full Depth Patching Project by Centennial Contractors of Quad Cities of Moline, Illinois in the amount of $149,321. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution accepting work performed under the 2022 Contract Milling Program by Manats Incorporated, Eastern Iowa Division of Comanche, Iowa in the amount of $124,392.29. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you. I'd just like to ask staff, was this work acceptable? Was it, was okay?
Nicole Gleason, Public Works. Yes, the primary purpose of this particular contract was for them to mill, for us to do the overlay. So this part was pretty smooth.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution awarding a one-year contract with two possible two-year renewals for the security services at various city locations to Global Security Service of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution approving a pre-construction agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the replacement of the Brady Street Bridge over Duck Creek. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is motion determining property values for the 2023 Alley Resurfacing Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a motion approving a contract for the design and preparation of bid documents for the 2023 Sanitary Sewer Lining and Manhole Rehabilitation Program to Strand Associates of Madison, Wisconsin, in the amount not to exceed $63,160. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 13 is a motion ratifying change order three, four, and five to Langman Construction of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $69,505.28 for the Veterans Memorial Park Improvement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman Lee?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. I would also like the plans and specs for, I believe, yeah, for change order number four, and I'd like this kept on discussion, please.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. So all items except for three and 13 are on discussion, and the rest are up for the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
We have a mo-
Oh, sorry. I'm on a-
You're okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that will conclude Public Works for this evening, Your Honor. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are six items on Finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents to grant a 10-foot wide access and utility easement to Scott County from the Scott Emergency Communications Center north to the Emergency Management Storage Building in the southeast corner of Parcel P 1214-071. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one? Council? Seeing no one, that will move on. Item number two is a resolution amending the North Urban Renewal Plan to include the internal TIF. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Council? Item number two will move on. Number three is a resolution awarding a one-year contract with four possible one-year renewals for towing services to Fred's Towing, Inc. of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? That'll move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the purchase of four 2023 Ford F-250 trucks equipped with plow kits from Strever's Ford of Waki, Iowa in the amount of $209,124 using State of Iowa Department of Administrative Services Contract number 230233. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number four? Council? I'll move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the purchase of one 2023 Ford F-450 truck equipped with a utility bed from Strever's Ford of Waki, Iowa in the amount of $73,349 using State of Iowa Department of Administrative Services Contract number 23033. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number five? Council? Item number five will move on. And finally, item number six is a motion approving submission of the City of Davenport Annual Urban Renewal Report for fiscal year 2022. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number six? Council? Below, we have purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. We won't read each of those individually, but they are listed there for your information. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our agenda?
I, I would like to move that all items be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That concludes ordinance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. The next area is, are there any other ordinances or resolutions? Or motions? There are none for this evening. The next area, is there any public with business? If anybody would like to speak, please come to the podium. Please, we'd love to know your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You'll have five minutes. Please address us as a body and not as an individual. Thank you.
Chair Mayor, council members, Bill Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, also Ward Ford, Davenport. And just a couple of things, again, on the riverfront. And one of the things that I noticed returning here from absence about six months is our skate park, which is, I think, one of the best things the city has ever done, kind of unexpected. It's a good-sized project. But I was kind of distressed to see that in intervening months, pretty much the entirety of that project has been covered with spray paint and graffiti, which I was, you know, the thing's 10 years old, I think, now, and up till maybe this spring, it had been pretty much as it was, and credit to the city. But since that time, again, almost every, every surface, concrete, metal in that facility has been covered with graffiti. And I, you know, I kind of say, why? What decision was made? Was there a public hearing to let it happen like that? Or if not, is the city going to spend the money to sandblast everything off to get it the way it should be? It's very, you know, it's disheartening to see that happen. I mean, I think council members would be equally disheartened if spray paint was applied to Modern Woodman Park, or let's say, our new Main Street Landing Playground equipment. If, if, if that was similarly disfigured by spray paint, I think it wouldn't be there that long. So I would respectfully ask mayor and council to look into that, to see what can't be done and how that ended up being that way just in the last few months. Again, it's not what I expect from Davenport. If it were Vandiver Park, it wouldn't have been there by, it would have been nipped in the bud. And perhaps there was an administrative decision to do that, to save money, but it reflects very poorly on the city, I think. So anyway, please, I recommend that council members and mayor take a look at that. And then number two, again, the Main Street Landing Project, I, I don't think that that is entirely, it's in design right now, but by having Sasaki Walker, one of the best landscape architecture firms in the country, do the work- landscape architecture firms in the country, do the work, you're kind of prejudicing the result to be a piece of landscape architecture. And I think you're forgetting, I probably said this before, what the Skybridge, Davenport Skybridge does. It's essentially a climate-controlled extension from the park right there, the plaza by the Redstone Building, across, attaching to the parking garage, and letting you out after, go through that beautiful view, onto the riverfront. Originally, that was going to tie into, you know, as you know, it tied into the casino. And I talked to the architects on that. They said, originally, there was going to be an air-conditioned extension on it at grade level to connect to the building. So, it would have given you an extension to the building itself. And I think for us not to, you know, to take advantage of that opportunity so that we ended with a building at the end of that of some type, that, and of which, right now, we've got a, our Skybridge system is incomplete, it just doesn't go anywhere. But if we were to connect from what's now, I guess, the, well, the hotel there, used to be the Radisson, going from there into the Skybridge Tower, you'd be able to go from the Adler Theater to the River Center to the Adler, to that hotel, Blackhawk, and then essentially dump down into a building that would be right at the foot of the Skybridge. One of the things I've noticed in Nashville over the last 10 years is, is people just love roof decks on a building. And we didn't have any about 12 years ago. And of course, you've got UP right now, which is a wonderful thing, but I think Davenport could certainly have more than one of those. And to have one at a lower height, but just right at the river, so you could look up and down the river and look across to Rock Island, would be a wonderful thing. And I suggest underneath that could be a banquet hall of some type, so that when you're at the River Center, now, we've lost that lot in front of it, but maybe that's a good thing, so that it wouldn't take that long to plug into the Skybridge, you know, the Skywalk system, cross the Skybridge, and you'd have this beautiful banquet hall. I think people would, it'd be a very, very memorable kind of thing, and for the cost that you're talking about making this another overpass, I think you could buy it, could build it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
This is going to be interesting. Good evening. My name is Daryl Gilmore. I live in the Sixth Ward, and I approve this message. Can we all agree that in six days when the election is over, regardless of who wins, we'll all celebrate the ending of these political advertisements? Christmas is, and always has been, my favorite time of year. Sure, as a kid, you also receive gifts for your birthday, but my parents never decorated the house for my birthday. At Christmas, the mood of most people improves. Most people have an optimistic view of Christmas, whether it's the holidays itself, the year finally ending, or the presents. That's what I want to talk about tonight, the presents. I carry in my change pocket the following coin. On one side, it says United States Marine Corps. On the other side, it says, Every Child Deserves a Little Christmas. Every time I reach into my pocket for some change, I see that coin, and I'm reminded of what's stamped on both sides. Now, often at these meetings, you're encouraged to use the funding and the budget and leverage it against other available funds to be able to do even greater things. This brings me to my point. I challenge each of the 11 elected officials to collect as much money as possible for Toys for Tots by next Wednesday. You may write a personal check if you wish. At that time, when we will have a representative from Toys for Tots collecting, counting. I am willing to match all of the collected donations, dollar for dollar, with a maximum donation from me of $550. That's $50 apiece. If one person can collect $550, then that leaves the other 10 of you off the hook. I will have my checkbook with me, and I'll write my check then. So, if any of you don't like me, and I can't believe that there are, collect a bunch of money and stick it, stick it to me, you know? If any of you actually like me, collect a bunch of money and help me make an even larger donation for Toys for Tots. Either way, Toys for Tots wins.
Daryl, this is a very good thing, but be careful on the solicitation side.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to guess that someone in this room can make arrangements to have a representative from Toys for Tots available. The only thing I ask is that my name not be mentioned by anyone or published in print. I'm not doing this for me. I'm doing this because, as it says on the coin, every child deserves a little Christmas. Thank you.
Was that a coin check? You know what that means. I'll talk to you later. Anyone else? Thank you.
Good evening, councilmen, mayor, members of friends. I'm Cosby Gibson, also known as Dog Man. I come to speak to you about having to do something about the children that's left out of our schools from 7:30 to 7:45 with no recourse of getting inside the buildings. Now, I don't know whether I'm addressing the right people or not, but I'm addressing the council to try to see that something is done to help the kids to get into school. There's no reason for kids to be outside, nowhere to go until 7:45. Some of their parents have to drop them off so they can go to work. Some of the kids have to walk to school. And some of the kids just don't have the funds, or the parents don't have the funds to sit and bring them to school like other parents do. That's not our school in this day. I think it's, I think it's happening all in the Davenport District, if I'm not mistaken. The children can't get inside until 7:45. So, I'm asking the council to look into this and see if something could be done. And the school says they don't have enough volunteers, or they don't have enough workers. So, maybe, maybe the council can do something to encourage or fund some kind of way for volunteer, to pay volunteers or get volunteers to help do something about the kids being left out in the cold and in the weather before schooltime. Okay? Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Ms. Spiegel, is there anything else? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good weekend. Please vote if you have not done so.